Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County Virtual Candidate Forum for the Wake County Board of Education. My name is Marian Lewin. The League of Women Voters of Wake County is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering voters and defending democracy. We encourage informed and active participation in government. Help citizens increase their understanding of major public policy issues and work to influence public policy through education and advocacy. As a nonpartisan organization, the League of Women Voters does not endorse or oppose candidates and is proud to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. All candidates who filed to run for the Wake County Board of Education were invited to participate in our candidate forums. Outreach included emails, phone calls, as well as certified letters inviting candidates to respond and provide citizens with an opportunity to learn about their views. Thank you to the candidates who are with us today.
Thank you for having us.
The Wake County Board of Education is a local governing body of the Wake Public School System. It is the largest school district in North Carolina and the fourteenth largest in the United States. It serves a very diverse student body and has improved its graduation rate so that almost ninety-one percent graduate from high school. Its nine members are currently elected from nine separate county districts. Each member represents that district within the entire board and is elected by residents of that district. The race is nonpartisan, meaning the candidates are not running as representatives of a political party and their party affiliation is not listed on the ballot. The school board sets policies for the school system implemented by the superintendent and administrative staff. The board also adopts an annual budget proposal that includes its request for local funding from the Wake County Board of Commissioners, as well as its plan for using their allocated state and federal funds. The school board does not have taxing authority. Today, we welcome candidates for District One Cheryl Caulfield and Ben Klappsettle. District One covers the eastern corner of Wake County. All candidates live in District One. Welcome Cheryl and Ben. Thank you for joining us today. We will ask every candidate for the Wake County Board of Education the same questions. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to the scope of the board. Before we begin, I'd like to verify with the candidates that they have not received the questions in advance. Can you confirm?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Thank you. You will now have two minutes for an opening statement. Please include in your remarks why you chose to run for school board and what makes you a good candidate for this position. Cheryl Caulfield, please go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for doing the forum and having us. I have been volunteering for the schools for about eleven years. My kids are in high school right now, so we still have a few more years left in Wake County. I've seen over the years the struggles that our teachers, excuse me, and our students were having and the lack of support they were getting. So asking a lot of questions about what was going on and where all that was coming from and who can help. It all kind of went back to the Board of Education, so I started looking into their role a little bit more and reaching out to the board and looking into some of the things that they were doing, some of the things they're responsible for, and I started to learn more about their role. And I think during COVID, a lot of the issues we've had, I think, were a little bit before COVID, but that kind of just unveiled it for a lot of families as they had to sit with the computers and go over things with their children in class and they saw the struggles that they were having. What I guess as far as qualifications go, I was a mortgage underwriter, a senior underwriter for over sixteen years, and I had to work strictly on analyzing, evaluating the financial risks and, you know, what qualified the clients and what they qualified for. And kind of rework things and work with teams to get the best outcome for our clients. So that allowed me, I guess, the skills to basically search for solution-based changes, which is what I think that we need with the board, the Board of Education. We need solutions. So I do believe I've had quite a bit of experience with working with teams. I think we need to work with legislation, the parents, teachers, straight across the board. And as a mom, I guess I've been working with the schools for a while and over the last decade, I think a lot of things have changed. So sitting back in the class with everybody and understanding the struggles and issues. I think my time's up.
Thank you. Ben Klappsettle, please go ahead.
Hi, I am Ben Klappsettle and I thank you, thank the League for inviting us here today. I will tell you, I owe everything, every achievement of my life to the teachers, coaches, band directors, and staff of the public schools I attended. And I'm thankful each and every day for their dedication, their work to prepare me with a solid, very solid academic and social foundation and the love for lifelong learning. My qualifications, well, I'm not going to go, but there's so much in depth because, you know, on my webpage, people can see that. But I have, I have been, I'm a certified project manager professional, lean six sigma, and I have multiple degrees in administration and leadership. But I'll tell you, I didn't think I, when I was growing up, I didn't think I could go to college or even dreamed that I'd rise to the rank of Colonel in the Army. Those teachers, those coaches, those band directors, they believed in me. They really believed in the son of a high school dropout and, and, and my mother, Korean mother, a war bride from the Korean War. They believed in me, a kid who grew up in a trailer park and understood poverty, who worked every summer in the tobacco fields, you know, to help our family. But it was their love and encouragement and the things that they gave me that I want to return back. My children, Nathan and Ronnie are graduates of Wake County Public Education. And I was here when we went through the Great Recession. I was here when the school board was taken over by a group of folks that decided to make drastic cuts. And I, I'm running because I do not want to allow that to happen again. I want to make sure that every child, regardless of their background, regardless of their economics, regardless of their identity, will have a great education that I know that Wake County produces each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the question part of the forum and you will again have two minutes to answer the question. Okay, question number one. The teacher pipeline issue is in the news frequently. Fewer college students are choosing education as their major and teachers are retiring or leaving the profession for better pay. Wake County is currently facing a staffing shortage and, and as reported in late August, that they will need four hundred more teachers. What strategies do you think would help Wake County Public Schools recruit and retain teachers? Ben, we'll start with you.
Well, that's absolutely a major issue that not only faces Wake County but across the state. And I will tell you that, you know, when decisions were made in twenty-eleven, twelve, thirteen about cutting benefits to teachers and, and then starting to attack public school teachers, nobody thought or nobody, I don't believe, strategically looked at the decisions that were being made. And those decisions are, are in effect today. And that's, that's something that I think every decision or every policy review that as a member of the school board, you can make, you can't just make it for a day or some gut reaction. You have to think about what that impact is for students ten years, fifteen years down the road. So what can we do? Well, recruiting, now, let me, let me, it's not recruiting, but let's talk about retention. Let's treat our teachers with respect and dignity. Let's make sure they have what they need in the classroom. Let's make sure that we take politics out and we quit attacking our teachers and saying that, you know, putting burdens on our teachers that are because somebody has some niche thing that they're bringing in from another state. That, that needs to stop immediately. Our recruitment is the same way. Wake County Public Schools has a program now where they are talking with high school graduates that are going into the public, to our public, our colleges, I should say, and then studying education. They can come back and they can work in the summertime to be, for training. They can come back and work and, you know, and be guaranteed a job when they graduate. Of course, they have to be certified, they have to meet the requirements and stuff, but those are things that we can do. And the biggest thing that we can do that I could do on a daily basis is talk with all the professionals. Treat the teachers as professionals, treat them with dignity and respect and make sure that I'm advocating on their behalf each and every day.
Thank you, Ben. Now it's Cheryl's turn to respond. Thank you, Cheryl. Go ahead.
Um, well, I have actually been speaking to a lot of teachers throughout our district. I think another, their number one concern from every teacher that I've spoken to, spoken to teachers who have actually left three years, five years, eight years, eighteen years, even some who are in the business over twenty. And they all have the same concern is that they feel like they're not getting support from administration. I think our biggest thing is that we need to listen to what the teachers are. We're spending so much time working from the bottom down that we need to start working from the, I mean, I'm sorry, from the top down. We need to start working from the bottom up. We need to be asking our teachers, they're trained, they know how to teach our children and they've been doing it for quite some time. And I think we need to really get down to what it is that they need, the resources, the tools. Their second problem that they're have, the majority, their majority of their problem is discipline in the classroom. They're all saying the same thing, that they really have, we need to focus in on it. They really do not have the support that they need. They have elementary school teachers, you know, they're being kicked and hit and bit. They're being cursed at, high school, you know, they're being punched. I mean, we can't really expect our teachers to be in this environment when they have this type of situation, they can't get support. They can't control the, the discipline that's going on in the classroom. But we also need to, they also wear a lot of hats. We're putting too much responsibilities on them. They're playing counselor, they're playing, you know, nurse and filling out all kinds of surveys and we're putting so much different things on them, different training and everything. And we really need to start focusing on what the teacher needs. Give them the resources with the money that we do have, we have plenty of money in the system. Give them the resources that they need, listen to what it is that they need and focus in on that. And that in turn will help our children as well.
Thank you. Okay, second question. Capital expenses are paid for with local property taxes. Building new schools must be carefully considered due to the high cost of land and construction materials. Throughout Wake County, we have some schools that are under-enrolled and others that are overcrowded. What are your suggestions for how best to balance the school population within the given resources and fully utilize our existing infrastructure?
Sorry.
Thank you. Cheryl, you want to go first?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get a call.
That's okay.
I'm on my phone, I muted my phone, it came in on my computer.
Okay, what, some schools are under-enrolled and some are overcrowded. What are your suggestions for how best balance the school population and fully utilize our existing infrastructure?
Okay, I think I understand what you're asking. So I, I feel like we are, we definitely have a very broad range, array of problems. I, I think as far as the schools, we have a lot of crowding and we have a lot of trailers, even in some of our newer schools. And I think that creates security issues. I think it creates a little bit harder of, like a manageable for the, for the teacher to work on. As far as working, and if I'm understanding you correctly, as far as working with what the schools need, I think each school needs to be individually, like, we need to talk to each school, find out what it is that they need and what the resources are. I'm not sure if I'm really understanding the question correctly, though.
It's balancing school population among the different schools.
So one of the things that I know that we, some of the students struggle with is busing and busing the children all over. And that does add a lot to, actually, to the children and to the work that they can actually get done. I do hear from a lot of parents that they are not really happy with the busing, but they do want the choices. So I think we need to look within with all the schools are, we have older schools, we have, you know, newer schools. We need to look at, see what their supplies are and what it is that they, not the supplies or resources that they have and what they need. With the teacher shortage, we're definitely going to have a lot of overcrowding in our classrooms. It's probably going to be worse and make it even more difficult for our teachers to teach the classroom. Hopefully I answered my question correctly.
Thank you. Okay, Ben. You're up.
In District One currently, I don't think there's a, a major problem with overcrowding in our, our base schools. Now, I think it's changing, that's going to change drastically in the next five years or so as Wake County continues to grow. And as we've seen the result of the, the opening of Five Forty and the bypasses around, especially as it affects East Wendell, I mean, in Wendell and Zebulon, Knightdale, those areas will grow. And our, one of the remedies, of course, that the, the board has to it is a, a using other facilities like Wakeville Ninth Grade Center, which was, I believe, in Old Kroger, just right down the road from, on Ninety-Eight and, and US One. But using those facilities as we prepare our schools to grow. The other solution that you talked about is, is using those mobile schools, the trailers. And, and, you know, look, five, six years ago, ten years ago, as we were growing rapidly throughout the county, especially in the southwestern part of the county, the use of those mobile homes or modular trailers, I think we were over a thousand. Now, we're nowhere near that now, but that is a quick fix in order to, and, and not, I'm not an advocate of it, but you have to put your students there. But we don't necessarily have that problem. But what we do have is, you know, we've got this capital improvement plan that the board has worked on and along with the, the school system, where we're looking at our construction, we're looking at where we need to renovate our schools. And if everybody would remember that there's a bond that the board, the county is putting together, I think it's five hundred and thirty million dollars, and it's going to renovate about seven schools and build five new schools, several of them of the renovations taking place in District One. So the capital improvement will, as those new schools are built, it will help reduce overcrowding in other, in other districts and other parts. So I'm running out time, so I'll stop there. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to the third question. School board members are elected in a district and from a district, but they govern the entire school system. In your view, what makes an effective school board member and what do you think are their key responsibilities? Ben, you can go first.
I, one is the ability to communicate and to talk with, you know, but we have, the parents are, are obviously your top constituents, but also the, the teachers and the, and the educate, and the professionals that work there. And you have to be able to talk with, and the other key thing you have to do is be able to listen and understand. There are, the board, like you say, votes for the entire county. So you have to understand the issues that are taking place, not just in District One, not just in Wake Forest, but what the, is the impact of some of these decisions or needs in carry as that area continues to grow and adjust. So effective communication, which is number one thing is listening, and then work with alongside the other board members. And it can't be, and I, and I say this often, is you can't be short-sighted in what you want to do. You have to think that, again, the decisions that were made, and I'll say this, there was a drastic decision to cut back in arts and music back in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven timeframe, when the, when the school board flipped and went, well, I'll just leave it at that. But, and then you had programs that were then, like, excuse me, the Wake Forest Rotary Club decided that they were going to help raise money so the Marching Cougars could continue on with those programs. But that's great outrage, it's great community support. But it also had impact because of that decision over the next ten years where they cut orchestra, they cut art teachers. And something I think is very, very important, especially for, for all the children. So having those skills, listen and talk with and understand what we're trying to do over the next five, ten years for a long-term strategic view.
Thank you, Ben. And Cheryl?
Um, so I think the, the role is basically, you know, making decisions about our budget policy and hiring the superintendent and the attorney, yes. But working with legislating, legislation and learning from our communities and what their struggles are, what works well, what's helpful. I think they need to, we need to listen to all of that. We need to learn from our teachers because they are our frontline and they are working with our children directly. So they know a lot of what is going on, a lot of the things that we need to hear so that we can make good decisions. But it needs to be also something that doesn't go against them because one of the things that they're doing right now is sending out surveys. They are not anonymous and each and every one of these teachers will tell you that as soon as you log on to anything using your computer or your device to answer the survey, it does actually go connect to their login. And it shouldn't be held against them because they're saying something that might go against our plan. Maybe they have more information that we need to hear about and we need to know what it is that feel is most effective in the classroom. Right now, we have, our class, our grades are seventy-nine percent not proficient in Math One and fifty percent not proficient in reading in third grade, which is a pivotal point, forty-two percent not proficient in biology, but yet we say we have a ninety percent graduation rate. And I know that sounds great, but how do we have scores like that where it's getting pushed through? So I don't think that as the board, we are actually looking at the real issues and what it is that we need to actually pull these kids out of this learning loss and pull them so that they can actually reach their potential. We also need to work on the budget. I think there's a lot of things that we can correct, that we could figure out. We're spending millions on textbooks and consultants, but what kind of changes are we making that is as effective as it needs to be so that we can pull these kids out of the rut that they're in? And transparency, we need to work with our teachers and our parents and it needs to be a team effort.
Thank you very much. The next question. North Carolina ranks thirty-ninth in the nation for per pupil expenditures and thirty-eighth in teacher pay. In Wake County, we depend a lot on local funds to supplement the state's budget. Do you think our current school budget is adequate for the needs of our school district? Explain why or why not. Cheryl Caulfield, you may go first.
So as far as our budget being adequate, I know that we get two-point-one billion dollars. They just gave us another increase in our budget. I do think that we have a lot that we can work with. We have got three hundred million dollars in COVID relief funds. Not all of that has been used. I believe that a lot of our issue, like I was just saying, is our budget and our accountability with where we're spending and what we're doing with that money. I do not believe that we are getting the best outcome from what we are spending our money on. I think that we need to really, like to say, peel back the onion and get to the source of the issue and see where our money is being spent. Is it effective and where could we spend it in places that we need? We need tutoring for our teach, for our students right now. Our teachers need resources, they need help. Right now, our teachers are definitely at the low, the low of, of being paid. They are definitely not getting paid enough money. I think we agree with that, it's straight across the board. But they don't have the resources they need either. So if we need counselors and we need, you know, mental health support, we need, you know, there's a lot of resources. I was in the classroom with the teachers and I went to go make copies for the, for the classroom for the lesson and it gave me a message. They, they ran out of copies. They weren't allowed to get any more copies. I don't think that a teacher should ever be put in a position like that. And when I went back to class, she was familiar with that message and she said, okay, today we're sharing ditto's. And not only are you spending that money, millions of dollars is in the budget for textbooks, we're not seeing the textbooks. And it's not coming home so that you could sit down and help your child side by side. So I do not think that we are putting all of our money in the right places. So I, I think that we have enough, we have plenty, I shouldn't say enough, we have plenty that we can work with and we can do better with.
Thank you. All right, Ben, you're, you're next.
I'm a big advocate of the Leandrew Plan, very. I, I know that, you know, Wake County, of the four, five major school systems, we're the largest, but yet, and we do have the lowest mileage tax rate of, of, of all the, of all the other counties. But I will tell you, and, and, and I do have my cheat sheet right here because I keep hearing, we need, we need, we need. And I keep hearing, oh, but we can take it from someplace. First of all, the budget and the accounting part of Wake County Public Schools is, is an open forum and parents, teachers, anybody could, A, either zoom in or go to it. They've won awards, they've been, they've been accredited, they're constantly being audited. So I don't believe that there's anybody hiding anything underneath an onion peel there. But I go back to the Leandrew Plan and I go back to what, you know, you know, we, I, I agree, gosh, we need counselors, we need social workers, we need nurses, and not on a rotation basis. We need them at the schools. We need them to support the teachers daily. If, if the state, if our state general assembly did what is constitutionally mandated to do and to fund us at the proper rate, that's nine hundred and seven more nurses, psychologists, counselors, and social workers. That would be our school system, right there. We're talking about books, a hundred and forty percent more books that the state funds and the state keeps in a warehouse. And of course, you know, we can only do but so much but supplement that. You know, professional development. I don't hear anybody talk about, when we talk about the respect for our teachers professionally and that they are professionals, that they get professional development. And that's over, what's fifteen-hundred some dollars just by the Leandrew Plan itself. And, and I'm thankful every day that our Wake County Commissioners also supplement the budget and help us try to meet this, the issues that we have. I've run over, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our last question. School safety and security is a complex topic with various organizations and interest groups tackling the issue from different angles. But clearly, everyone is concerned about school safety. What is being done well by the Wake County Public Schools and what would you suggest is needed to improve school safety? Ben, you may go first.
There we go. Well, one of the best things that Wake County did two years ago, and, and they just produced it the last couple of months, is their school safety assessment. And they did this with an independent group that came in along with the, 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 the school safety staff of the public schools. And they reviewed every school. They reviewed the campus. They looked at and, and they made note of. Now, every parent, every person, I think, I've got my copy, I've got notes on it because I think it's very important. And it lays out some of the things that, one, we can do, we should do, and it, and it doesn't, and it, and it does, doesn't pull punches. Now, if you want the full report, I do believe it's classified and, you know, it's, but you, you can get this executive summary online. So I think it's one thing, it was an honest assessment to look inside to see what we could do. So I think we're doing great with that. I think our municipalities that support our, our SROs, having that agreement with them where they all, each of them, especially in Wake Forest, Roseville, Wendell, Zebulon, they all agreed to the terms and agreed on how they will support our SROs. And it's very clear that the principal, the principal is in charge of that school. The SROs, they do have the principal is in charge of that school. The SROs, they do have their their law enforcement things that they have to do, but the integration of the SROs into just our high schools now. I'm not talking about at all the other levels, but just that integration where we have community buy-in. I I talked with the mayor of Roseville and just absolutely superb the support that they give Wake Forest High School and the support they give. So I I and Zendel, you know, Wendell and so in Nightdale, so don't get me wrong. I think that's absolutely great. I think that I I wish I had time to talk about other parts of the the security environment, which is also respecting and dignity of all our students. So it's a learning environment. But I I that's maybe I can wrap with that one at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cheryl?
I know some of these things, it's hard to fit into minutes. So I agree with Ben. We do have a pretty good system as far as you know, the safety and some of the protocols that we have. I do believe that we have a strong relationship with our principals and our SROs. I do believe that the SROs work pretty hard to be present in the schools, to be part of it as a community. And not so much that they are a police force, but they're there to kind of act as the co-parent, so to speak. You know, along with the principal and the administrators there. I do think that we have some programs that we could add to it to make it stronger, not to say that we should never keep looking to make it, make the situation better. You'd never know what your situation is going to be until it rises and becomes an emergency. There was a suggestion that was made for dads on duty. It's a volunteer group where you have the the dads come into the hallways and kind of monitor and just kind of walk along and say hello and just the presence of them being there. Monitoring in the high schools, especially bathrooms and hallways and activity that happens that could keep it safe. I know everybody is very concerned about getting into the school, you know, and when you hear of tragedies such as the Texas shooting. But there's a lot of different issues that we need to worry about when it comes to school safety. Bullying is definitely something that is in the in in the forefront for me. We have zero tolerance policy. But I don't see in the policy what that actually means. What are the consequences? What does that mean when you say zero tolerance? What is the tolerance level? And there is no consequences that is being told both to administrators, parents at me, I'm sorry, the 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 administration in the school, the parents and the children. So nobody's really learning from that. I think we could do a lot better in the bullying aspect and also in the drug and substance abuse programs that we could add into that and continue that past the fifth grade where we have dare program gets introduced. But like I said, and Ben said, at a time, there's a lot to talk to, talk about there.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the candidates for coming today to participate in our virtual candidate forum. We recognize that running and serving elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy and often sacrificed opportunities. The league, along with the residents of Wake County, is grateful that we have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward to serve the important duties as a member of the Wake County Board of Education. You will have two minutes each to make closing statements. Cheryl, you may go first.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having us on this and coordinating it. I know it's a lot. I would like to close with saying that I will definitely work hard to serve and support our teachers and our children. And to reach out to our parents and to try and empower them to work with the teachers. And if they work from the backend and our teachers from the frontend, I think we could really do a great team effort. It takes a village and we need to work together to make that happen to make sure that our children can reach their potential. That is the main goal, is to teach our kids and to get them to a point where they can go out into the community and follow their dreams. I want to focus on the fundamentals. I think that we have lost a little bit sight of our goal with some of the things that has been going on in the school lately. And I would like to bring it back to a positive light in our schools and focus solely on the best education material. We need to get back to basics and give education back to our children. And I would hope to hear more from teachers as I go through the community. I would love to hear more stories, what would work, what doesn't work, what's worked best in the past. And I think it could really help shape our schools. We have a lot of great things in Wake County, and I think we could do much better. And I think that's always the goal, is to keep looking for how you can strive to be better and do better and have a better outcome. So I'm at Cheryl for wakeschools.com. That's Cheryl, the number four wakeschools.com. I'm also on Facebook. And I look forward to meeting new people and hearing more suggestions and how we can improve on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ben, you're up next.
Well, first, thank you. Thank you very much for having us and 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 letting us answer your questions. And these are, these are questions that are important every day. No matter who sits on the school board, whether it's twenty twenty-two or this is is twenty thirty-two, I think these are our issues and things that we need to always talk about. I I want to tell you what I believe, and I just mentioned this earlier. I believe in a safe, secure and inclusive environment for all students, teachers, the staff and families, and that everybody feels welcome on our schools. And all our children and can reach and grow to their full potential. I strongly support additional school counselors, mental health professionals and social support staff in our schools for our students and for our professional staff. I believe that all students across all backgrounds deserve and receive the best education that we can provide. I mean, our state constitution, I carry around, I've done this, I give my age away with, ever since I was like north, asked the question one time, said, do you have you ever read this? I carry around the US Constitution and I do carry around the North Carolina Constitution with me. And it states that the Constitution agrees the right of publication to all. It doesn't say whether it's just for the people of privilege. It doesn't say it's based on your income, your race. Doesn't say how you identify. It says for all students. And I believe that's what we must do for all our students. I believe we have to work to retain our teachers, administrators and support staff, and they need to be paid a living wage. We need to treat them with dignity and respect. We need to take politics out of our school. I think we need to also thank them because they deserve our thanks for their work each and every day. Because I really believe what they're doing today is building our tomorrow. Again, thank you very much, Ben Clapsetale. And I and I look forward to look forward to meeting
Thank you. As we end our forum, we'd like to encourage you to visit our website, vote four one one dot org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot and to find out the latest information on early voting as well as polling place, hours and locations. Please make your own plan to vote and encourage others to vote in the upcoming election. Thank you again for joining us.